All right. As it is now seven o'clock, I will call the September 4th meeting of the Topsfield Elementary School Committee to order. We will start with introductions. To my right.
Steve Greenberg, Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
Scott Morrison, Superintendent.
Natalie Calvert, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Colleen Anderson, Reporting Secretary.
Andrew Prezire, Topsfield School Committee.
Emily King, Topsfield School Committee.
Melissa Augustin, Topsfield School Committee.
Brendan Gahigan, Topsfield School Committee.
Adrian Alford, Interim Principal Proctor.
All right. Any remarks from the public?
Good evening. I'm Jen Steinberg, math specialist at Proctor School and co-president of the Topsfield Teachers' Union. I would first like to personally thank Sarah Guyney, my co-president for the past school year. Sarah has stepped away from the role as she begins her new life as the mom of baby Evelyn. Sarah and I were part of a larger team of Topsfield representatives on our tri-town coalition bargaining team. It was a new format for our negotiations and we entered with cautious optimism. The process was time-consuming, extremely well-organized, and collaborative. I was personally involved in conversations between school committee members, town administrators, members of the tri-town admin team, teachers, support staff, and IAs. These conversations opened the eyes of many to the day-to-day demands of educators and support staff. The end result was a contract that can entice new teachers, retain veteran teachers, and better reflect how much we value our IAs. On behalf of the union, we thank school committee for your commitment to the process and the end result. I would also like to introduce our new co-president, Shay Redman, now Shay Bossy. Did I say that right? Okay. Shay is a third-grade teacher at Stewart and will be a great voice for our union members. Proctor welcomes interim principal Adrian Alford. He's been eager to learn about our practices and traditions and willing to bring his unbiased lens to each new topic. We look forward to a great year. In advance of your vote on a new policy regarding phones and other wearable devices, we polled our members to get a better sense of their opinion. With over 30 responses in a short amount of time, I can report that 97% of the union members support the idea of a ban on cellphone and wearable devices in our schools, and 94% support the proposed list of offenses and corresponding actions. We also asked for comments, some of which were, "I wasn't even allowed to feed my giga pet in middle school." "It is not strict enough. Five chances are one too many." "This would be great." "This policy will benefit all students and allow them to be fully present with humans in the building and not distracted." "I worry about the amount of time it will take teachers and staff to enforce the policy." "I do feel the majority of issues stem from parents. Parents call and text their children. Is there a way to acknowledge this?" "My kid's middle school has phone pockets in homerooms. Is this an alternative to the lockers?" And lastly, "School committee proposal mentions the use at dismissal. This would be very hard to monitor. Can we wait until students walk out of the building and not when dismissal begins, since students are still in classrooms or hallways? For example, our dismissal is 3:07 and at 3:33, the last bus came." And they are congregating between that. Thank you for your time and consideration, and the union looks forward to a great year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the report of the superintendents.
Great. Thank you. Good to see you all back in person from our August Zoom meeting. Jen, thanks for all of that. Shay, welcome, and Adrian, welcome as well to the in-person school committee meetings. We also have Peggy here tonight to talk a little bit about PRISM and appreciate Julie being here as well just to help with support as our consultant comes in when we get to our report from the efficiency study. So, a couple of updates just from when we last met in early August. We've had several meetings since that time. Before I dive into those meetings, we have sort of five bullet points there: summer readiness, new teacher orientation, opening day with staff, and opening day with students. Before I dive into all of those, the fifth bullet, if it's okay with the chair, I'd just like to take first while Peggy's here at the top, just talk about, update on where we were and are with the PRISM grants.
Thank you. You may have one. So, happy to share good news about the PRISM grants. So, there were two separate PRISM grants. There was one called PRISM II, which was for grades K to 3, and then a separate PRISM grant that was called PRISM III, and it was for grades 4 through 6. So, they were totally separate applications, different funding sources, different terms of the grants. They had some similarities in common. We did get both of them, which was very exciting, and especially where they were competitive grants. So, we did apply as a consortium, so Boxford is the official fiscal agent for the grant, but Topsfield does share in those funds. The funds that are specific to Topsfield are the reimbursement funds for the inter-reading materials, so the amount that will be reimbursed for materials is $78,610 from that grant, from the two grants combined. So, the K to 6 will be reimbursed by that amount. But the state, and we didn't know this when we were first embarking on what PRISM would be, they're really committed to making sure that the program is implemented well, so there are some additional requirements for us and some additional funding that is really geared towards supporting implementation. So, one of the things that they do require is that we have a PRISM Curriculum Council, which, that can be sort of a group that is guiding the implementation and has representation from, you know, different constituencies within our schools, and it can be an existing committee. We have the literacy leadership team, so that will be our PRISM Curriculum Council. And they are also expecting, because this is part of Literacy Launch, which is trying to unify pre-K with the rest of elementary, they are requiring that we add pre-K to our literacy leadership team, and there is some funding to support that in the grant. The other piece is that they assign you a PRISM coach, so it's a, you know, like a literacy consultant, basically, who works with the district around high-quality implementation of high-quality instructional materials, and so we've been assigned to work with School Kit. As you're aware, we've worked with Hillel's Literacy previously. We have a very tiny contract with them this year just to continue the small group instruction training, but our major partner for professional development for this year is School Kit. We already started work with them. We're still fleshing out the scope. So, believe it or not, the PRISM III grant is already done. It was a very short, two-month window, but the PRISM II grant will go until next June. And so, we're still working out the scope of work with them. But basically, they'll be supporting our leadership team and thinking about how leaders, how we set conditions to make sure that this can be implemented. There's also some funding within the grant to help pay for some of our HMH training from the publisher, which is nice, and there are also some stipends for specific purposes for teachers to support implementation as well. So, sort of a nice package of different things that are going to benefit us as we're putting it in, but I know one of the biggest concerns was being able to get reimbursed for the rather considerable cost of the materials themselves, so it was nice that that did come through. And that's pretty much it. So, just excited to be able to share that news. It was embargoed until very recently, so we could not share that information before this.
Yeah. We're thrilled. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your work on, I know grant writing is not fun. So, thank you for tackling that. So, just to be clear, so the $78,000 is a reimbursement, and then we get those other things on top, or is the $78,000 pay for the things you were just?
The $78,000 is specifically reimbursement for the materials only, and then there are other funds available in the grant that are covering these other things that they are requiring. So, we have to work with School Kit, and they've actually been lovely to work with so far. So, but that's a requirement of the grant, and the grant does include funding to pay for that partnership.
And is the $78,000, like, being returned contingent on us, like, checking those boxes and following through on those things, or is that something that just will happen?
I, they haven't said that. I mean, we are following through.
Well, I know. I figured we were.
I'm not worried that that's going to be a problem. So, yeah, so I don't think that'll be an issue, but we just have to, like, put in the paperwork. So, the materials, you know, arrived rather recently, and as we're going through the process of checking off that we got everything and putting the invoices through, that's when we do the reimbursement. So, that will be coming.
And is that, do they give you a timeframe on that? Peggy's at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year? Like, it's just, it's nice to hear this now as we start and adventure off into a new school year. It's always nice to know that, you know, there's unexpected things that might happen in a budget over the course of a year, and with that money coming back in to the, to the school district budget, you know, help us maybe navigate some unexpected things that always seem to pop up. So, do they have a sense of when that might come back in?
Yeah. So, the, we just have to get sort of, make sure that we've checked everything off and have our paperwork ready to pay the invoices, and then we can submit for the reimbursement. Because the PRISM III grant is actually already over, we need to put in for that pretty soon and get that reimbursement. We can also, as soon as we have all of that paperwork done internally, we can also put in for the reimbursement on PRISM II and to get those funds back pretty rapidly. So, I expect we should have those funds back, you know, mid-fall.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions on PRISM?
Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Okay, to continue?
Yes.
Great. So, a couple other updates. As I said, some meetings that we've had since our meeting in August. So, we had our summer readiness meeting that we have every single summer. That is with our police colleagues, fire colleagues, government public safety, bus company, Whitsons is there, Toronto Public Safety is there, but also the highway department's there, DPW is there, school admin is there as well. So, it's a full complement of people as we start to embark on the new year and we just literally make sure everybody is filled in on, you know, all the details of the new year, what road closures there might be, and just making sure we're reinforcing all of our policies and procedures and processes as we navigate and work with all of our town partners. So, that's always a productive meeting. That was around mid-August. Brian and his team did a tremendous job with the new teacher orientation that was held right before the first week of school, the Tuesday before the Monday, we were all back as staff. That's always a fun day to see our new staff here, people excited to come and work in the tri-town. We've been thrilled. I think you heard me talk about in the August meeting with the hirings that we've been able to make across the three towns this summer, so that has been outstanding. Our opening day with staff is probably one of my favorite days of the year. It's just a great way to launch everybody into the school year. We get to have the opportunity to bring all of the staff back from all three towns in one spot and just really have a sort of a consistent message. And I'll share with you, I will very quickly go through a condensed version of the slide deck, just so you can kind of see what some of the messaging was. And then also, the 1A and the 1B is always our opening day with students. That is also such a fun day to be around in all the buildings and seeing all the kids come in and greeting everybody, and we're assigned, we assign central office to each of the buildings on those first couple of days for arrival and dismissal, just to be an extra set of hands, but just to also be part of the joy of the first day of school for students as well. So, if you go into the drive, you'll see a PDF. It reads 25, 26, opening day. There's a big welcome back on it. Can't miss it. And so, this is the, I'll give you the very condensed version of what we do at the Topsfield Fair. We appreciate our colleagues at Coolidge Hall that allow us to use the fairgrounds, and we appreciate Chief Hubby and his team because they help with logistics and traffic and getting everybody in and out of there at the same time. So, it's a 71-slide deck. We will not be here for 71 slides. This will go very, very quick, I promise. But the first slide is just welcome back. The second one, I always start with gratitude. I just love that quote about, "It helps people feel a more positive emotion, relish good experiences, improve their health, deal with adversity, and build strong relationships." So, we had a lot of thanks to people. Third one, that big smiley face there, Mr. Greenberg, also gratitude. We talked about the gratitude.
Locked in the basement.
Yeah. It's what someone else said. Yes. Locked in the basement. Yes. Locked in the basement at home, I think, for that picture. But just thanking Steve for all of his contributions to the tri-town and letting everybody know that, you know, this will be Steve's last year, and then talking about our coming soon. We welcomed everybody up. We had our associations join us, association co-presidents, principals, central office team, and just sort of did that big welcome. And as you scroll through the next several slides, you can see we celebrate all the years of service, and so you can find and see the Topsfield names, five years of service, the folks that are on there, 10 years of service, 15 years of service, and these slides were all PowerPoint slides, and they got more sort of interactive and fun as we went along. 20 years of service, and then 25 years of service. You can see some Topsfield names on there in terms of Katie DeFrank and Diane McCarthy, all Topsfield folks, and some Middleton and Boxer folks in central office as well. 30 years of service. The folks who are celebrating, I just got a chance to hand-deliver Helen Herr clock just as passed Tuesday, and Doreen at 30 years of service as well to the tri-town school union. Again, this represents all three towns. And then we had two folks from Middleton at 35 years of service, Stacy Vegan and Louise King. And then we made a big deal, a big, big deal of Mary Farley. Mary has been here 40 years, which is unbelievable when you think about that amount of time in the school district. So, Mary works for us, works with Peggy, actually, and does a lot with preschool in one of our towns and so on and so forth. So, we always make a big deal of celebrating the tenure of our staff. As I said to the staff in their back-to-school letter from me, the agenda would be really focused on three movies, Back to the Future, Polar Express, and The Doors. And so, for Back to the Future, I really took them through and rebuilt that history. You know, we have a lot of new staff that's joined us, so what we did at the August School Committee of talking about what we did back in 2016 and the entry plan and the survey to all the towns and the software program we used to analyze and crunch all the data and themes that emerged and our, you know, our road to 2028, planting that flag in the future as we had talked about at that point in 16, our K-1 kids would be graduating around 2028, so we planted the flag there. And then in 2022, I'm on slide 24, we resurveyed everybody all over again. So, all the slides that I took the committee through back at the August meeting, we took the, all the teachers back through again because we've had a lot of new hires, obviously, since '22 and '16. Our vision and our pillars, and talking about how it compares to the DESI vision, and then on slide 34, that fake number of class of 2040, that seems like this artificial thing to me. It just seems so far away, but in 16, 28 was the same distance away, and when we get to 28, 40 will be the same distance away. So, that was sort of the Back to the Future. The Polar Express, love that movie, and there's a great scene at the end where Tom Hanks is punching tickets as kids get back on the train. And so, to the leadership team, I said this year that I want you to all think about, what is your word for this year? If you had to punch a ticket for this year, what would it be? And then I asked everybody in the audience, all 450 members had to think about that question, turn to our partner and talk. I appreciate Julie. Kelly, Julie has created for the leadership team this exact-looking ticket, and the word is sort of punched on it, and it looks like a whole punch, and people have those hanging in their office as sort of a reminder of what our word was for the year. And so, as you scroll through, you can see what everyone's word was. Mr. Greenberg was at Mission. Mr. Calvert Development. Clifford, Optimistic. Julie had Airport, and you think about that in terms of, in the tech department, you have things on the runway, things on the hangar, things on the runway, the hangar, and in-flight, and how do you manage all those different projects?
I think she's asking for a vacation.
Exactly. It might have a double meaning. Peggy had peace. Ryan had support. Adrian had trust. Carol had unite. And then you could see these are some other folks. Our Boxer principals are in there, and then our Middleton principals are in there. And then I had cohesion, and I really like that word, cohesion. And what cohesion means to me, and the dictionary definition is to sticking together tightly. And there was a great slide 54, there's a great little YouTube video of this little young boy. You know those blow-up Halloween dolls that you see?
Clicks it.
Yeah. The little blow-up Halloween dolls. They, he was dancing exactly like him. It's a cute little video. So, that was an example of cohesion. The work that we did on slide 55, you know, back in 16 and '22, and, you know, allowing that cohesion to happen between the first five years and the second five years of the work that we did. Jen mentioned this at the top, cohesion, our negotiations that we went through last year was a great example of cohesion, of sticking together tightly and solving things as they came up. The tri-town regional report and the efficiency study, that's a good example of cohesion, really trying to always continue to think about ways of how can we, you know, build a better tri-town school union in terms of the work that we do, and we'll learn more about that tonight. And then, this is a great video on slide 59. It's when I mostly, when I think about cohesion, and it's a story of inclusion. If you get a chance to watch it, I think if you click on it, it will open. It's just two brothers at high school in Rhode Island and how they stick together tightly in school as well. And so, I then asked them, them being everybody in the audience, all of our staff, our teachers, and our IAs, and support staff, and faculty, to think about what their word would be. And so, then, for The Doors, before I got to The Doors, I shared a few items of interest. We talked about core skills in 2030. On slide 64, this slide fascinates me, the percentage of student time in school. When you think about how many hours in a day that a child has, that all of us have, but we're talking about children here, how many days in a year, and then you figure out the school calendar. So, from January to September, if you look at it from a calendar year, a child spends 14% of that time actually in a school building, which is remarkable when you think about what gets accomplished during that timeframe, and just such gratitude for all of our staff and families who work hard to support our kids in the 14% of the time that they are in school. At the summer conference, one of the keynotes was Tim Schreiber at the superintendent conference, and he talked about the dignity index and how, is there a way to measure how people are responding to each other? And on that next slide, on slide 66, he talks about how judgment leads to contempt, which can lead to dismissal. "We have normalized a culture of contempt in the society." These were his words. "The single most thing that ruins relationships is contempt. We're winning fights but losing America because of contempt. If there's no relationship, there is no learning. The foundation of our relationships is dignity." So, he and his team had developed a dignity index that provides feedback for how we treat people. When we use contempt, it's hard to see, but when we start to see it, it's hard to use it. And then he showed what us, he's able to score these. He gave people examples of like, here's a social media response. This is a one on the dignity index, right? And here's a, you know, a quote from Gandhi. That would be like an eight on the dignity index in terms of how you respond to somebody. And it's just an interesting way to think about how people respond to each other and some of the contempt that we can sometimes see in society at large. And then really, my final note on this whole idea of the dignity index was that a lot of it has to do with self-awareness, and again, that's another fun little cute video where this young girl has excellent self-awareness. Mom says, "Are you smart? Are you this? Are you that? Are you this?" And she goes, "Yes, yes, 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 yes." And then she goes, "Are you kind?" And she goes, "No. I'm not." So, it was just a good example of self-awareness. So, again, all those videos you can kind of watch when you get a chance. And then The Doors, it had nothing to do with the movie The Doors, but it was the only movie that I can think of that had the title The Doors in it. And it was just this idea, as I said, to the staff of, I think we all do this in our jobs. I'll talk about schools, but if you think about the job that you do and the work that you do in your life, at school, we all have stuff, right? Every one of us has stuff in our life, and there's home stuff and there's school stuff. And I think in all of our jobs, we do a really good job of all of the emotion of the home stuff. We leave that at that solid door of school, right? We don't bring it into our workplace. We, all the things that might be happening at home, or relationships, or whatever the case may be. What I don't think we do a very good job of in general, this is generally speaking, is the emotion of work that somehow seems to creep through the screen door at home, and that impacts sometimes home life. So, just talking about how important it is to, we do a really good job of not bringing our home stuff emotion to school and making sure that we do a really good job of not bringing the emotion of school to your home. We're always going to have work to do. We're always going to have emails to answer and lessons to write and papers to correct and meetings to prepare for, so it's not that stuff. It's not the work stuff. It's the emotion that goes along with it. And then, speaking of doors, we just played Don't Break On Through from The Doors because then dismissing 450 people out of Coolidge Hall is always a fun endeavor, so we wanted to make sure that we didn't break on through any of the doors. So, that is a very condensed version, number of slides skipped, but just to give you a general sense of what our opening day with staff was all about and the general messaging. And we appreciate and have gratitude, as I said, for all of the staff who work in the tri-town school. So, those are the updates since we all gathered on the first week of August.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions? All right.
Moving on to the report of the Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
Good evening, everyone. What's included in the drive is the financial report for September. It is the very beginning, of course, of the fiscal year. Nothing extraordinary to bring to the committee's attention at this time, but the details are there for your review, and I will answer any questions, any questions, excuse me, that the committee may have. Seeing none. Next item, food service. So, we do have, I believe, full staff for Fuller Meadow. I mean, Fuller Meadow, excuse me. My apologies.
Wrong town.
Yeah, right. We have a full staff for Proctor, right? And we have full staff for Stewart, and things are going along. I think there's some items we'll be watching. I know that we've been working to make sure that we have all the allergy information set up for the kitchens in a confidential manner, but it's, of course, it's in the POS systems, but also in a hard copy available in the kitchens. And I think we're off to a reasonable start. Adrian, if I'm misspeaking or there's any issues that I'm not thinking of, please feel free, but I think we're off to a decent start for food service. Transportation, everybody's favorite. So, transportation continues to be a challenge, and we do have, we're down a driver for one of the buses, and it's problematic that we are, you know, pushing, and it's going to be one of those things that hopefully we can get a permanent driver and stability in that route as quickly as we can. We are at the mercy of the situation. It is the beginning of the year, so there are some aspects of all of the routes that do need to settle out. That's a normal thing, and the routes are revision. We probably want to, the goal is to post a revision for the routes within the next few days. That we do have, I'm using the term numerous requests through all three towns, so, you know, you look at each one of those. Every one of those stands on their own merit, and so when we evaluate requests, then, you know, we're looking at those things, and it's not one of those things that you just, okay, there it is, all done. You know, it does go through a process, whether I'm out looking at it or I'm asking NRT to do that, and they are short-staffed. So, even though they said, "Yeah, no, here's our plan for our staffing model," that's not working out. You know, we've had a nice, well, I won't say a nice, it was a, I had a conversation with management about the circumstances. I won't get into that, but it is, we're pushing. And I'll stop talking and answer any questions or take feedback from the committee.
So, I guess my question would be, and I know we don't have, I'll use the word leverage because we're bidding against nobody, like, we're, it's a one-bid situation. It's not like we can go necessarily get somebody else. When services are not being delivered as promised within the letter of the contracts, what recourse do we have to either request changes and/or recoup monies?
So, I do recoup. So, when you ask that question as far as recouping, I keep a journal. So, for every day that I have an issue that I believe warrants taking, you know, recouping funds, then I will take the cost of that run for that, that day, whether it's the, if it's a morning and afternoon, it's the whole day. If it's just one of the two, then I'll take half. And then, as each month goes by and when we get the invoice, I'm looking to make sure that their credits match my credits. And if not, then we'll mark the bill up and say, "This is what we will pay you." So, there's, there's the answer to that. As far as making changes to the service, we can do that. There is a process, and that's spelled out specifically in the contract, how we would do that, you know, putting it in writing and, and then moving from there.
I mean, yes, my concern is, like, obviously, the beginning of the year, there's always bumps, but we're now in, like, year three or four of there being serious bumps that don't just end after two weeks. They continue throughout the year.
Yes. And I promise you, even though, like, you're not seeing that frustration in emails and you're not seeing that frustration in communications outside of my office, I promise you, I'm going through it way more than you are. And I, Dr. Morrison knows how I function, and he has to hold me back in terms of how I'm communicating and putting it out there. So, we will be having more discussions, and we may be looking at options in terms of how and who are part of those discussions in the near future, because something's got to change, but I don't think it's as easy as we may think. I want to be careful what I say, you know, to try to be as professional as I can be. I want to be careful what I say, you know, to try to be as professional as I can be. It's just not as simple as we may think. So we really want to be thoughtful in our discussions, but really make it clear what, that we're not happy, but know that we're also married to three other entities in this contract. We're not alone. So we can't function unilaterally as far as a town is concerned. But please, more questions, more feedback.
So I think my core value, and I think the core value of everyone here is that our students, while they are in our care, right, from the time they get on the bus to the time they get home, they feel safe and like a competent adult is in charge and that they're going to be able to get to school hopefully on time, which I know isn't happening yet. But then also there's some feeling of safety that the parents know where the kid is and that they're getting home and not being taken around, all around town, right? So we've been in communication that there are major, major issues and safety concerns with the 28 route. And I think my ask would be and has been over email that before a route is changed, the change is communicated to the parents. I don't know how hard it is to put out things on Parents Square. I don't care if the routes are updated every day and it's pushed out every day. If the stops are changing, the parent should know. And I also think if the app is going to be down, that should also be communicated to parents, right?
I don't, I don't think it's been down, you know, since we went live.
So the bus 28 isn't tracked, right? The bus 28 says that it's parked at the fairgrounds and there's no tracking on it. And I don't know if that's the driver turning it off or if it's because they're using the substitute bus or whatever it is.
There you go.
Right? So it's probably the substitute bus. Either way, I think it should be communicated to parents, there's a substitute bus, the tracking will not be live for your student, right? Because the other ones, it is working. You know, what happened this afternoon was rather egregious, I think. And I just feel like we owe it to the parents, like some form, I understand that it's not us, but like they deserve an apology or they deserve some communication around what's So I don't know how we go about doing that, but I think the lack of communication creates so much frustration. And then again, like this is a large chunk of our budget, right? This is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And for parents to be like, I'm never putting my kid on a bus again. I will drive them every single day. And last year, all the parents of the kids from my neighborhood who went to Proctor could not rely on the bus to get them here on time all year. So it's like, that's not fair, right? So I would love to see the record of like how much we recouped for last year. I think we should keep an accounting of it for this year. I would also like to figure out how I can request the GPS data for where this bus has been going because of the reports of what's happening.
Yeah. You don't, you won't get GPS. They don't, won't do that when with the app.
Foya or anything?
I'm sorry?
Can you do like a Foya request or anything?
The app isn't designed for that and there's a reason for it.
No, I know, but.
But, you know.
Somebody must know where the bus is.
I would have, I, I won't speak for the company. I just know the way the app is designed and what it's designed to do. So that a bus can't be tracked for safety purposes, but when it gets within the vicinity that.
That's fine, yeah. But again, I think that like on some level, somebody knows where this bus is going.
So we share the same concern, obviously. It's not a normal lever to pull for Steve to be down at dispatch. That's not a normal, that's not typically what happens. Like we don't send school staff to dispatch. And Steve was there very early in the school year, expressing in very direct and clear terms our level of dissatisfaction with how things have been processing for the past couple of days. And Andrew hit it right on the head in the sense of, you know, it's this startup and that's going to be always a startup every single school year, right? The problem is, as you just pointed out, this is day whatever of that, right? It's startup every single year, but then it continues into November and December and January and, you know, maybe in a lighter or a lesser form for sure. So we 100% have the same degree of dissatisfaction as you're expressing, Alyssa. There's no doubt about it. Steve expressed, as I can say to you, in very clear terms, that level of dissatisfaction on behalf of the school department. We are envisioning, as Steve talked about, getting a group together with NRT to have this exact conversation with them because, as Steve and I talk all the time, couldn't agree with you more. It's a big part of our budget. We wouldn't allow another vendor to operate this way, right? And the analogy I was making with Steve the other day was, this would be like if Whitsons didn't have food on multiple days and, or one grade level just didn't eat or it was running late and we couldn't feed that group until 2:30 in the afternoon, we would be pretty.
But it's scarier than that, right? Because it's a kid alone on a bus that's driving around town who's not home for an hour.
Yeah, I'm not putting a value judgment on degree of scariness. I'm just giving you an example of, to answer your initial question of, you know, we should expect more from this vendor because we spend a lot of money on it for sure, right? And so that's where we are. We're at the same point you're at right now. We're in constant communication with NRT. As Steve and I have said for now, a couple of years, we need to stop leaning into the fastballs for them because they need to hear a few of these fastballs and maybe hear the direct feedback from folks on the committees. You know, we've had them come to a TCU meeting in the past and share some things, but that's not the same as maybe getting the chairs together and getting Masco together and really looking at this on a broad scale and having a very in-depth conversation with them about what are we doing to move forward. As Steve said, it's very difficult to pull the plug on something like this because we are not alone. Topsfield is not the only school district that associates with NRT. We have two others in our jurisdiction and then we are married to Masco as well. So it's not a, an endeavor where we can just say, oh, you know what, we're going to just hire a new X to do this job. But your frustration is shared by us. The safety concerns are shared by us for sure. I can assure you that this is top of priority list for Steve right now. This is consuming all of his time, as it should be, because it is important to make sure, as you said, our kids get here and get home safely. So there's no question about it.
I think, yeah, so my ask is more communication to the parents, like every day. We have Parents Square, whenever, with whatever you know, right?
And that's a key piece of it. We can only communicate what we know.
Route 28 still doesn't have a driver.
How many, I mean, how many, this is the thing. How many times am I going to say that?
I don't care.
You want me to say it every day?
I would like it every single day. I think everyone would like it every single day. I could be wrong. I don't know if I would, if I have a kindergartner on a bus, like people want to know. I also think the messaging from school staff to parents when they call is important, right? So today a parent was told like, the driver's gone rogue, they're doing whatever they want to do, which is like.
Who said this?
When the parent called the school office, that's what they were told.
Okay, that's feedback that's important for us to have.
The school office, I think, needs to respond in a way that's like, we've got it, we're calling the company, we're on it, right? Not like the editorial.
That parent should ask to speak to the principal at either of the schools and share that concern so the principal can address that. So if you know that parent, they should absolutely call the principal of either school tomorrow and have that conversation with the principal so the principal can direct that with office staff.
Okay.
Because that's not an appropriate response.
Right. But that's what's happening.
And that's not an appropriate response.
So I appreciate that you're on it and yeah, I don't know, I just, I think the more communication, the better.
Thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts, feedback?
Suppose we don't have the budget to buy 10 buses and bring in.
No.
We've done, we've done that analysis for sure.
No, the thing is, it's just not.
No, no.
Is there another company out there? That, that's in this area? And the only other thing, you know, just as part of this conversation, just for this conversation, the only other option is cancel the route. And that, that's just going to make it harder on everyone. So if you talk about trying, if, if the objective is consistency, you know, as part of the overall discussion, that's the only other thing off the top of my head right now would be, okay, we'll just, won't run 28 because we don't have, until we have a permanent driver. But I don't know if that's the best thing, but yet it's not just me.
Is 28 the one with the most issues?
28 is the sub-driver.
Right.
So there is not, there's not consistency with that route, familiarity with that route. You know, if I'm giving you, you know, perspective and feedback. And so therefore it ties in with everything that Alyssa just said and it's absolutely understandable. You know, as much as we push and what we expect, you know, and having that, the drivers know the routes inside and out, do dry runs, so on and so forth. You get another sub or they're, they're coming from another district and it's not that bus, it throws everything on its side.
Is suspending the route until there's a permanent driver an option? Like is that something?
It is, it is an option.
Did you survey those?
It, it is an option. You can survey everybody, you know, absolutely, but just, you know, when we're talking about addressing, so the answer is yes, we can do all those things. But if we're trying to realize consistency, you know, and addressing those concerns and consistency ties in with safety, that's an option. Now, in doing so, we will probably still have students that live two mi, more than two miles that we will have to pick up, which means the other six routes will have to absorb that. And that makes six very long runs even longer. So just, just know those, those little things that we would have to navigate. But definitely appreciate the feedback. It's not lost on me and we're going to keep pushing. You know, it's just, we don't share those conversations outside.
It just blows my mind that in 2025, there's not like a route-guided device that the bus can follow.
Like a nav?
They, they may have it for the driver, but it isn't something that's put out there for the parent.
I think she, I think.
The driver has a piece of paper with.
I would, I like to think they've got navigation. I thought they had navigation on their bus, but I'll find out. I'll check out with.
I just sent a text.
They're just asking the parents where to go next and what turns to make. The kids are driving them.
But this is the thing. That's another thing too. It's not easy to drive a bus.
No, yeah.
You know, you've got whatever, you've got to follow the route, you've got to pay attention to everybody behind you. And they are definitely energized and it is a distraction, you know? And so that becomes a major safety issue in trying to manage your bus, drive the route, and then if you have navigation going, tricky. But points well taken.
Just sent a text to NRT to reinforce the same concerns that Steve and I have been sharing with them and that we're, you know, gathering feedback from school committee as well. So they're aware of that. We're not the only two unhappy people about the circumstance. So if you can touch base with Lee that tonight or tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm asking to go there. I have no problem. Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Any other questions, feedback, compliments?
All right, moving on to the principal's report.
Excellent. Carol couldn't be here tonight.
She already did the financial report. Right?
It's in the draft.
Yep. So again, we welcome Adrian as our new interim principal at Proctor, doing a great job at the gate, making a lot of nice connections with staff and families and kids. And if Adrian wants to talk a little bit about opening days of school and then we can talk a little bit about handbook and school improvement plans.
Opening days are fantastic. I mean, it's been so lovely. Parents have been fantastic, the kids have been wonderful. You know, it's, it's nice to, to have a veteran staff who knows what they're doing, to have a well-oiled machine. You know, we're already getting, we're already getting down to, to learning in classrooms, you know, setting the expectations of, of what should be happening in classroom. As all of you know, the first six weeks are really important to set those expectations and that's already, that's already starting. But even having said that, teachers are already holding a high bar academically. So it's really nice to see. I, I don't love hiding in my office. I call my hobbit hole. I don't want to be in there. So I've been out and about the whole time. I can see already great things happening, so it's been, it's been really fantastic. So, you know, the two days were kind of a warm-up and now, and now we're already hitting the ground, so it's been really great.
And then in the drive is the principal report. If you want to walk the committee through some of the highlights of that report for a pronder.
Sure. I mean, we have some new hires with us. So Lisa DiSimone, specialty long-term sub, Lindsay Fabry, school adjustment counselor, Amanda Geiger, behavior specialist, Diane Hegarty-Cota, and April Layden, specialty teacher, and Julie O'Neil, classroom teacher, sixth grade. We are still in need of a .5 reading specialist and an IA. We're definitely trying to find both of those, so hopefully we'll have good success soon enough. 251 kids at this point in time, as you're all well aware, those could ebb and flow, those can pop up, they could pop down, but currently 251. And then I, well, say the first day was really endearing. Everybody wore a bow tie. I wear that. I'm going to say on the other hand, I have been painfully critiqued if I don't wear a bow tie, so as you can see, I have one today. And then, yeah, that's kind of what I got so far.
Excellent. And then down the bottom there, as you can see, started to talk about FY27 budget as a team. And that work will continue at both Stewart and Proctor. And there were some thank yous to TespO. They've been very busy with the back-to-school ice cream on the comment and the teachy appreciation. Welcome back gifts. Adrian, what's the status, handbook? Have you guys had an opportunity to work together? I think Brendan, Brandon?
Yes.
Carol? And Adrian? You guys have all been able to work your way through that?
Yep.
Yes. Some of the links were obviously owned by somebody who is no longer with us, so we had to kind of navigate and work that, but yes.
Sarah was still on some of them.
Ah, okay.
Yes. That was the person.
Perfect. And then has the handbook gone out yet?
Not yet.
Okay. And that makes sense because as we talk about away for the day tonight, that would be the logical spot for that to go, for sure. And then school improvement plans in the drive for the committee. So as a reminder, we worked on a new policy last year and so these were kind of happening in real time as we were developing the policy as well and getting that policy approved through the policy subcommittee. Appreciate truly working on developing a common template for each of the schools. And so Adrian inherited obviously the plan here at Proctor. So Adrian, I'm just going to ask if you wouldn't mind just kind of walking the committee through that plan. It's in the drive under Proctor Elementary School, 25 to 27. Template-wise, the way the template is set up for our six schools, we start with our vision and pillars. And then we include our school committee goal statements in there, the list of the site council members who worked on the site council. These are parents and staff for 24, 25. The meeting dates that were held last year for the school improvement plan. And then the way that we built it was really around our pillars. And our pillars, as we know, match and align with our vision of inclusionary practices, social-emotional learning and innovative teaching practices. And so if you can just walk the committee through some of the goal statements that you inherited under those areas.
Yeah, so the MTSS is my background. That's definitely what I have done in many other buildings. So out of the gate, I have posed it to everybody that I'd want to start getting that going. A fully functioning MTSS model is going to help not only students, you know, succeed, but it's going to help teachers as well be able to utilize their time in a more constructive manner. So when you have those clear expectations of academically and behaviorally, it takes less time with the, kind of the reteaching portion of it and they can kind of focus on what you need to. So that is something that's going to be out of the gate already. I'm already reaching out, so that will be a committee, will be getting going probably next week or two. You know, kind of thankfully for me, I have a whole framework that I pulled from other buildings I've worked in. So it will be important for the committee to look at that and see how we can best utilize it in our building. Just because I have it somewhere else doesn't mean it's a one-size-fits-all. So that work is already, already happening right now. Social-emotional learning, we have second step. Another one of my backgrounds, being a former school counselor, I have used second step. So we're going to be looking at that. I've been talking with the school adjustment counselors and seeing how we can integrate that more utilizing their backgrounds, both by grade level and getting the, getting classroom teachers to also want to do that. So when you can incorporate it into their instructional practices, then kids are, you know, getting it twofold and it will become more ingrained in, almost like muscle memory for them. Then I have not had as much with the new reading program. I would say that was Peggy, but Peggy's gone, so.
I will go over and poof, she's gone.
The committee is very familiar with that.
Yes.
Alyssa and Andrew could probably present on it right now.
Alyssa can. But I know that work's already happening as well. Peggy, what do you think? I know we've had training on that. I can say that my colleagues here have been diving into it headfirst, have been very eager to get it going. I've, I've already heard positive things about it in classes, so rest assured it's being utilized with fidelity already.
Great to hear. And then for Stewart, you can see a similar template. So Carol and her team, parents, teachers who run the site council, the meeting dates at Stewart. And then similarly connected to the pillars, second step program as it relates to social-emotional learning. As Adrian had talked about curriculum-wise, second goal is implementing the new into reading program, along with all the PD associated with that and looking at in-class data and classroom observations and all the day-to-day, data day, D-A-T-A, day work that will happen as we head into October. And then continuing to build staff and student autonomy, maintaining strong student engagement, looking closely at meeting and exceeding the standards around personal growth, resources,[1777.15] Resources, Samarhawk, all-school STEM challenges, PBL, teachers as facilitators of knowledge, utilizing the VR headsets more, school safety always being a top priority. Just a little side tangent on VR headsets, working with a longtime colleague who is in the ed tech space. And one of the things that we are working on and looking at right now is, if you think of like a flight simulator for pilots, right, you can put them in the plane, and you can pretend it's a hurricane or a snowstorm, and it's very windy, and can they land the plane? And if they don't, the plane doesn't crash. It's just the flight simulator shows you that it didn't work as it should have worked. And we've talked for a long time about how do we create a flight simulator for new teachers, right? How do you, how do you create a parent-teacher conference for the first time? How do you create a, an attorney or an advocate at an IEP meeting and navigating some of those pieces, right? And so using an AI-powered background, what's currently in development, and Brian and I have both tried this out. I tried it in the VR world, and Brian tried it on the laptop. It's basically, one is a parent conference. You're with a parent who has a concern about a specific topic about their child, and as the person on the other side of the VR goggle, when you have VR goggles on, the person's right in front of you. The body language is very, you know, this, and sort of kind of back, and, you know, and as you talk, and as a parent explains their concern, how you respond to it dictates the parent's next response. And how do you sort of navigate through that situation, that circumstance, in a way that is productive for everybody? And at the end, a rubric comes up, and it shows the teacher, you know, you did this well, you did that well, so on and so forth. Another one was, it was a high school simulation, but it was a high school student asking you who you voted for in the last election, and things about your personal life, and what do you do on the weekends? And again, how you navigate through that conversation. So it's just an interesting potential use as we continue to think about how virtual reality could help inform the work that we do and develop those sort of flight simulators. And you could see uses for that in any occupation, in police, fire, public safety, putting them in different situations and circumstances where they have to respond in a virtual environment in a way that is a teachable moment for them, for sure. So that's a little tangent on the VR. So what will happen with the school improvement plans is that according to the policy that we worked on, we will get an update at our May or June meeting from Adrian and from Carol in terms of how the implementation of these things has been. And then they will start to write, so these are two-year goals. So they'll start to write the next two-year one, starting next year, as we continue forward in this sort of two-year cycle. So we kind of tied it to how we do Etavale, where it's a every-two-year model, so.
Scott, maybe ten minutes second.
Yeah.
So it's been nice to work with Carol so far, because we're really coordinating, you know, vertical alignment. It's important that if they're starting in Stewart, they're going to be coming to Proctor. So we've already been kind of collaborating and making sure that, you know, we're aligning our expectations and goals as well. So that's been really nice for me, being new, and having her, who's a veteran, be so collaborative. So I look forward to that as well.
Thanks, Adrian. All right, any questions? All right, moving on to new business, gifts and grants. No gifts and grants for tonight.
Excellent.
All right, moving on to the efficiency study presentation. Great. Mary Ellen is here. Hi, Mary Ellen. Working away over there in the corner. Well, Julie helps Mary Ellen get set up. It's okay with the chair, if Matt gives a quick update on some of the work we're doing around TTU pre-K programs. And then we can just kind of quickly review some dates while we get into setup mode.
Great. Hi, everyone. So one of the things that we wanted to look at this year around preschool-wise, both the offerings that we have across the tri-town, plus the tuition that we charge in relation to the program offerings that we have. So the work that is currently being done, and I'll give you a little bit of a preview of it, but the work that's currently being done is trying to align what we charge for the programs that we offer. And what I mean by that is X amount of dollars for this type of program and this amount of hours in relation to private and other public preschools, how many hours they offer for how many dollars. Because what happens easily sometimes is these huge numbers come out for private preschools, like, oh, I spend $15,000 a year, and $20,000 and $30,000 a year. But some of those programs are seven in the morning till five at night, right? So I'm in the process and working with some people to really break it down to an hourly rate, because I think that's the only way to try to figure out what the apples-to-apples is. So in a very preliminary sense, and I'm going to bring, I'm going to kind of grid this out for you to see, it looks like we're relatively in line right now hour-wise, but again, I want to put a little bit more work into that. But that's where we're at. It's really, instead of just saying, we charge this and multiply it by five months, like, that doesn't work. It's really breaking it down to the hourly rate. So we'll be getting to that. And while we're doing that work, it's also the conversations about what are the offerings in Topsfield? What are the offerings in Boxford? What are the offerings in Middleton? And is that like that for a reason, or do we need to get a little bit more aligned? So I will be back maybe October or November with a much more specific update, but we wanted to let you know that we're working on it.
Thank you, Matt. Couple of date updates. So our next meeting is October 2nd. And then as a reminder, TTU meetings this year are after the Middleton School Committee meeting. So Middleton starts at 5:30. So we'll be in a Topsfield School Committee meeting on Thursday, October 2nd. And then who are the reps for TTU? You guys remember off the top you had Alyssa, Andrew, and Candace? Okay. So that'll be like seven-ish as we get closer to that date. We'll get agenda out to folks, so they are aware of that. And then finally, in the drive, before we go into the efficiency study, if you go to the folder that reads "Efficiency Study Presentation," you're going to see three documents in there. One is the PDF of the entire efficiency study that we gave to everybody to review at the August meeting. So thank you in advance for taking the time to read and review through that long document, 63 pages. Is a Google slide deck in there that is, you can't open it. That's basically because that's the originating document that you're going to see tonight. So we just don't want people in there clicking on stuff. So the PDF is the exact version of that Google slide doc at the moment. But that's just the source document that Mary Ellen used to develop this. And so it's in the drive, so she can present from it, but it's not openable, if that's a word, for you guys to see. So if you want to follow along with the slide deck on your computer, if you open up the PDF, what Mary Ellen shows on the PDF will align with what she is showing on there. Again, you have met Mary Ellen, many of you did, at the TTU study. We appreciate Mary Ellen's work with the tri-town schools. Just as a refresher, she came to us in the fall of last year after the three committees approved this idea of an efficiency study to figure out, okay, regionalization wasn't something that the three towns wanted to pursue. Is there a way to make the tri-town more efficient? And our specific focus really landed on a business office, county payable, HR, payroll, all of those things. Mary Ellen talked to all of the town halls along the way, all of the staff here in Topsfield and Boxford and Middleton, and has put together a very comprehensive report. I had thought Mary Ellen had been retired for a few years now, and she told me she just retired last school year, and she's already knee-deep in all this work. So we appreciate Mary Ellen not taking too much of a break in terms of leaving her work as a business administrator. So Mary Ellen, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I have, I fortunately have long arms, so I have to reach back and move my slides and the mics. I'm. Yeah, there we go. Okay. All right, so I'll be doing a little bit of a dance, just bear with me there. So thank you very much for having me back and speaking to each of the, I'll be speaking to each of the members of the tri-town school committees. And the slides tonight, I'll, I'll walk through, do an overview of the report, and at the end, have lots of time and opportunity for your, your questions. I want to say that it's been, this has been one of my favorite projects that I've taken on. I would often find myself doing some of this in the districts I was hired in, and you have a great, you have a great community. Each, getting to know each of the three communities and then getting to know the union in and of itself is, you really have something that's unique, so you should be very proud of what you have. And it was a little nostalgic listening to the transportation issues. I'm so happy I don't have those this September.
And Mary Ellen, also joining us tonight is Kevin Hartuning, who's the town administrator here in Topsfield.
So with every, you know, every report, every community is really looking at what the mission and vision is of, of the school union, and that really drove the report to make sure that whatever is being reviewed, analyzed, is always put in the context of what is the mission and vision? And is that feeding, is the work and activity of employees and community members, committee members, feeding that mission and vision? The same holds true for the key values as well of, of tri-town and where those are already present. So, you know, you already have efficiency through collaboration. Some of that is already happening because you are a school union, have been, been in that structure for a long time. Also, very important and very clear is community identity, and maintaining that, preserving that identity is also very clear, excuse my cyber stuff, so. And then also, you're really having, another value you have is around having a balance and is being strategic about having balance and navigating what those tensions are between standardized systems. You have three towns you have to communicate with, and three, and they, those bring different structures and different, different elements to bear. So the other part is, the methodology that was used is, I had focus groups. I talked to the employees both on all three finance departments, the tri-town finance department. I also spoke with a number of central administrators. I looked at all of the process and procedure, procedures, looked at systems, meaning software that was implemented. I did a literature review around what is a school union? What's the history of the school union and to see, and why is that important? So the approach was really sort of kind of bottom-up, which is, how is this, how is the school, tri-town school union organized? What are the people and the culture? What's that like? Where are those, are there gaps? What efficiencies are there? Leveraging data and systems, and how are those integrated among the three communities? And then how, and where are processes and procedures? Are they uniform? And are they, are they in place? However, when you do the approach, you then look at implementation, and it's really top-down. And most of the work and the recommendations are in your process and procedures and unifying those across the three towns, integrating your systems within tri-town. And the report talks about the different systems to do that with. The other part is also around developing your people. And one of the pieces is around having a unified team, because you really have three towns that really, from a financial standpoint, all three, you have four finance departments that all need to collaborate and work together. They may not all see themselves as needing to work together, but the tri-town is kind of the spoke or the hub of the, of the wheel. So it's important to have a unified culture developed. And, and I have to say that is present, and, and, and there's growth and opportunity. And then the other piece, because you, you also have to look at how you're governed. Is there opportunity for efficiency on the governance side, and what might that look like? And so, but implementing any of the recommendations, I just want to reinforce that it's really, I might have looked at it from sort of bottom-up, but to implement any of it, you would need to go from the top-down. Because part of what you have are some organizational challenges that you need to work through before even talking about ever consolidating. And I'll likely use the word consolidating versus regionalization, because it's really consolidating. Because you do have siloed operations currently. As much as there's collaboration happening, there's siloing happening, and that's creating some inefficiencies. You all, and that also is producing some communication gaps in and among the communities and as well as even within the district. So pretty simply created a template for the finance office and pulled the processes and procedures that we, that I was able to collect from the three municipalities, as well as from the business office. And really, because these documents of, for process and procedures are really important because you have succession planning that needs to occur. And in all of the districts I've walked into or left, you always want to leave it better than you found it. And one of the key pieces for every school committee to know, when you have transition, particularly in your finance area, and actually, I'm going to say, it doesn't matter what position is coming or going, it's important for the school committee to know and understand that there's a process, documented process, that if the only thing that person has is a book on the shelf or a Google Drive or a file, that they can actually step in and learn the process. So these are very important. They're also important to, to review periodically, probably, once they're written, probably every five to 10 years, because technology changes and systems changes, and requirements also change. And then we also, I also looked at the development of sort of data and systems. And I have to say, I was incredibly impressed with the integration and the development of your, one of your HR applications, because I've not ever seen any, it's a common application. So having an employee have the initiative and the, and the freedom and flexibility to really build that out, to enhance the efficiency, is really incredible and valuable. That's not happening and replicated in multiple places. So where you need to, where you're, where tri-town runs into issues is around duplicate processing. And one of the examples in the report is my sitting with one of the finance, new, brand-new finance staff, where I showed him a couple of things in Munis of how to work, what Munis looked like, and it saved him having to make four phone calls or three phone calls to get the information, because he was having to call the town to get the information that he actually had in Munis. But nobody on the town side with the phone call thought, oh, maybe I should teach him to fish and actually show him how to use Munis. So that's some of what's, it's not ill-intent. It's not a bad relationship. I just want to reinforce that. I think it's, people aren't always thinking like, oh, I could really just show him what he needs to do, and he doesn't have to call me. Although, if they like the phone call and it's a good way to talk to each other, you know, you don't want to give up the social thing either. So there's that risk reward. But you have four separate financial systems, and the school's required to have its own because the town's financial systems won't accommodate the current account structure that the school department has to follow. So there's, there's some efficiencies, excuse me, that can be handed there. So my recommendation has been to really look at the financial applications and find out and do some integration of how can those, how can you reduce those at least by one? Human resources, how can you have human resources applications both electronically, talk to your payroll provider, third-party payroll provider? How can you have it talk to Munis? In which fortunately, all three towns run Munis as their financial applications. And also fortunately, the school department has, the, the parent company of Munis bought the, bought the company that has the school departments. So at some point, those are all going to be together and merged. They look very similar as it is now. But having those electronic transfers rather than a human keying, re-keying things in is also something that is future-oriented, as well as, I even dare say, is that the school department actually perform payroll and do their payroll in the town's financial applications. It happens every other community I've worked in, whereas the school department, we did our payroll. But I also know some communities actually have the school department do the payroll all the way up to the warrant process on the, on the town system. So that would help alleviate potentially a third-party payroll system, because the school department, which is the largest payroll, would actually be doing their payroll and would actually be in partnership with the town finance department to make sure all of that is correct. So those are cultural things. Those are conversations that can be had. And then the other piece is, and why this is here for student information, because you're wondering why would student information be here, is really around, we have to report all of our faculty, staff, and significant number of employees to the state based on their assignment of what they're teaching and how they're supporting students. So having all of that information communicating electronically eliminates a lot of key errors, reconciliation of entry and, and the like. And there are now ways to do that, and somebody else is already, somebody else has already fixed the problem. And so that's part of that recommendation around having an enhanced integration plan around technology and what, how that would work. middleware solutions, that's basically the term of the application that sits between the two larger applications. You would need for a short term, somebody who can. You would need, for short-term, somebody who can do the integration, work with the staff, make sure the programming and integration is done, that could be any number of different people. And essentially, the way it really works is when you have the culture of all the, all three towns and the school department, all in the same boat, rowing in the same direction, keeping their identities unique and clear, but you can still all have an oar and all be rowing in the same direction, we're all following the same statutes and have the same requirements. And ideally, the recommendation is really kind of thinking, in my world, we always had one town, one team. You have three towns and a school union, so it's still one-team approach, is trying to get one approach, both from a culture standpoint, in terms of the finance area, HR, promoting sort of cross-functional knowledge and how that works. If you have a new employee, is having them have a mentor on either the municipal side or the school side, to bridge those gap, create those relationships that need, that are really valuable for, when towns and schools communicate, collaborate, and work together, they, they are very powerful and, and very empowered. And the financial operations of any community is leveled up dramatically, you can tell. You know when a town and school are getting along in a town, and you also know when they don't. And particularly, school committees, because there are just certain things that you don't seem to be able to get. And then there's also, and so part of that is just having a, a shared alignment around structures and, and objectives. And so, shifting, so how do you get to that culture? That's where the shared vision that Dr. Morrison has had during his nine years here is, needs to get flow into or down to your line staff. It needs to flow down to your custodians, to your food service employees, it's, and to the municipal departments. You want your DPW, police and fire, to know what the goals and values are of the, of the shared educational vision, because every one of those departments plays a part in a child getting to school, or being, sitting in a seat. And so, when they know that and they understand that, then they also understand why a lion's portion of a budget and resources go to schools, because they understand what the mission and vision is around that. There's still the financial pressures, but if you can gain, have, have municipal departments understand and have some understanding around that shared vision, then when they walk into a school, they see evidence of it, because they know what it means and they know what it looks like. I always, as a school business administrator, you know, the price of crayons mattered to me, because, and what crayons we were buying mattered. Because when I walk into a classroom, there's a PO in my brain that, you know, bought 10 of those books on that shelf, and I want to see those books when I walk into a classroom. And better yet, I want to see them in the kids' hands. So, that's the other part of the vision, is when you have your custodians and your, your secretaries and your food service employees also embracing the vision, it, they become part of the culture and part of supporting students. And so, part of the recommendation is to establish a collaborative working group, which would work on the communication, how to have uni, a unified approach in whatever actions are considered to be implemented. And also, having those discussions about how to, how to optimize resources for any of the future, future, future options. So, I revisit history at this point, partially because I found school unions pretty fascinating. They were prolific in the early days, because everybody had a small, you know, one, one-room schoolhouse. There are still 16 today, and they serve 54 towns, and I, you know, I thought, oh, that's just the western part of the state. It's actually not, it's all over the state. And so, with, with that, one of the things that I found interesting is that, of the school unions that have, that feed directly into a regional, there are 12 that have already consolidated their leadership over the years. Tri-Town was the only, and Mascanomit were the only ones that did not share a superintendent. And I thought, huh, why? That's curious. So, I interviewed three, three very different school unions that were part, that fed into a region, and I said, so how do you work? What does, what works? What doesn't work? What are the concerns with the towns? And so, what you have in the report is sort of a composite of what might work here, or what a structure could look like. None of that, that structure that's in the report does not exist anywhere. They all have run into little political, you know, things that have happened along the way. But you, if you, if the district thought about, or the, if it was something that you wanted to do, there's kind of a base structure to start with and to pick apart and argue about and, but it was curious that of, you know, that tri-town was the only one left out not having a shared superintendent. And I want to reinforce that the shared superintendency is allowed by the regional school district law. So, the mechanics of it, so, well, what I'll do, so, the options that you have is, I've done a bunch of things that, the recommendations around, how can you really up-level what you currently do and enhance, enhance your current state of efficiency? If you, the hybrid, I call it hybrid regionalization, I really should say, is a consolidation. The way the superintendency would be merged is not by vote, but is actually by vote of the tri-town school committee and the vote of the Mascanomit School Committee. So, essentially, and that's how the districts that have the shared superintendents do it, is they use the law that allows the regional superintendent to be hired by another town. And so, the school union would join in contract, by contract, with the regional school committee in the superintendent's contract. And so, the report has for you two samples of what that contract language looks like. But you can't do that until you actually get some of your base level efficiencies, because you have four sets of books that you have to maintain. Each town still remains their unique fiscal structure and autonomy. You still have a school committee for each town, plus the region. So, the only thing that changes is the central office and the leadership. All the other fiscal structures, everything else remains. And to do that, my estimate would be anywhere from 18 to 36 months to actually get to that point. And then, if 20 years from now, 10 years from now, it made sense to regionalize, that in itself is a, is a 12 to 36-month process, because that's a town meeting vote process. And there's education of citizens and residents to do that. So, that would be, that would be the length of time. It's not something you can do tomorrow. Certainly, you can start on the, on the efficiencies that are available now, to, to prepare, or at least just up-level what you currently have. But that, that in itself will require a timeline, a collaborative working group, and essentially, they're balancing what you currently do now. And I put, always put forward, because it's part of my own philosophy, is whatever is happening really needs to be student-centered, student-focused, because whatever happens is going to impact the classroom. It will impact the child sitting in the seat, as to whether they have crayons, paper, computer, a desk, a chair. And so, it, every decision has to have a student-centered focus, because that's what education, that's why we're here, doing education. So, those are the, that's the sort of fine points. So, that's the end of my quick summary of a very detailed report, and I'm open to questions, comments, constructive arguments, per se.
Non-constructive arguments, no. Thank you very much. Yeah, I was just saying, Scott, like, this is a very comprehensive report, but actually really easy to read, so I appreciate that. Like, I wasn't bored. So, thank you for all the hard work you put in this, and obviously, all the time, all the background research and things like that, that went into it, it was very time-consuming. You know, I think the thing that, so, my main takeaway was that the first thing that would lead to the greatest amount of efficiency, sort of the biggest bang for the buck, would be seeing if we could find a way to streamline, not streamline, but make the central office financial, the, what we use ID, is that what we have?
School EAP Pro, that's what it's called now.
Work with the municipal, municipal systems. Is that more or less correct? That would be sort of like the first step, and also like the biggest efficiencies.
Yep.
In other towns that you spoke with, do those towns have their Munis or whatever system set up to work with the school system, so that it's, it's set up with the coding to report to DESI? Or is that sort of a mixed bag, depending on which town we're talking about?
So, none of them do, and that was one of the questions I had with, one of the conversations I pointedly had with each of them, is, so why are you not functioning as a department of the town in, in your ledgers? And that gets to sort of a lot of historic angst between school, town and schools. And they, and interestingly enough, all three did not have the same answer as to why they weren't running on, on the municipal side. And all three were like, oh, don't do it. I'm like, well, my experience with municipals, I, I changed charter of accounts in two districts, because I had to. And that wasn't, I mean, we were partners, so, why, it, so, I, I landed where I know it works, and I also did it and put it out there, knowing that there would be some discussion around whether it's a good ID or not, or what would need to happen. I do know that in some of the community, in each community, it, the requirement is, and I don't know, I hope I made it a strong, as strongly stated as it needs to be, whatever Steve has in school ERP, ERP Pro for charter of accounts, has to go to the town. And so, that's where the first, first hurdle happens, is the town's charter of accounts and the school's charter of accounts may or may not be able to coexist. And so, that takes some study and it takes some time to work through. It's unlikely that it, well, I'm an optimist, so I'm just going to say that. I've not met a charter of accounts that I couldn't change, so, but it takes some negotiation to change it. And that's important to do, because there are many communities on the municipal side that have had to, that have run out of account numbers, because of how they have set their chart up, and have had to do a whole revamp of charter, of their charts. So, that's a discussion, that's like the first discussion that has to happen, if you want to get those to integrate. And the reason why the tri-town chart that Steve has built has to come over, is because that's built on all the requirements that the towns have to report to DESI, the education, the end-of-year report and the financial function, so we need every single field that's filled in. Because they, because in the 1993 Ed reform law, we're actually supposed to report by grade level and subject matter. They haven't enacted that yet, because nobody can put that in their chart yet. But it's there, and so, that's the level of detail. You're doing it by school, you're doing it by different programs, subject, like, it's pretty detailed. The towns don't have that requirement. They have a Schedule A to set a tax rate requirement, and so, it's very, it's very different. It's doable. So, that's the first hurdle of discussion that would need to happen, is, you know, A, are they willing? B, can it fit? And C, what's the cost going to be? And that's a, that's, you're hiring Tyler to do that, to do the actual, the actual conversion. And so, that's a, that's a financial resource and timing. Having done it twice, it's, it's, it's a, it's a white-knuckle weekend. It works, but it's nerve-wracking for the staff that, is it really going to work? So, those are discuss, those are the kinds of things that, that's where that strategic timeline is really important. It's also where it's really important to have kind of balanced, all four of those, kind of a balanced approach, as well as just having a collaborative group. You know, in my head, having three towns potentially all doing the same thing, there's some efficiency in all three towns, sort of working together. We all run the same requirements, and, you know, potentially, there is some efficiency, at least for cost, potentially, around working together to incorporate that.
And in terms of middleware, would that be our accounting software talking to like our HR stuff, or our accounting software talking to the municipal software?
Both.
Both, okay. And there are options, like, on the market for that kind of stuff?
Yeah. And your student information system as well, because of EPIM. So, you know, you've got, you've got payroll, payroll and HR and EPIMs, those are three different systems right now. And, and actually, you have two payroll options, two, right now, you have a third-party payroll and you have one town still on Munis. One efficiency right now could be, the school department does payroll in Munis for the school department in that town, to test and sort of gain that knowledge and skill. But again, that requires a team, and I think it requires sort of all, I, all three towns at the same time, so everybody can learn together and be, learn, you're not repeating the same errors and mistakes, everybody's brought on the same way at the same time.
I've monopolized the questions, anyone else have questions? So, Scott, I think I would turn to you now and say, what do you think would be the next best step? Like, is it, do we talk internally amongst the three school committees about what we, how we feel about this? Do we start pulling in town partners right away, or is this something we want to talk about, like the TT USC in October?
Yeah, so I would say that, get through the September slate of school committee meetings. So, this, you guys are first. Middleton didn't have the first meeting because of the holiday. So, we have Middleton Monday, we have Barksford next Thursday. So, I think, hearing what the feedback is from school committee members, at all, just taking some notes as we're talking here now. And then, looking at all of that feedback from school committee, seeing the recommendations that Mary Ellen made, and then start to work on those next steps. Like, I really appreciated this study, this was a very, very helpful study in terms of how we can increase efficiency. I love the notion of, you know, we talk about our pillar and our vision, you know, our teachers could recite it, and our, all of our administrative staff could recite it, but as we think about, as Mary Ellen talked about, you know, could the facility staff recite it? Could the food service staff recite it? Could the town hall staff recite it? Right? So, the idea of looking at the different departments within town hall and connecting with our town administrators, and, you know, maybe at a department head meeting, talking a little bit more about, here's why the school department does what we do, in terms of the vision, the mission, and so on and so forth. So, I think there's some real low-hanging fruit there, in terms of those communication pieces. And then, I do think, I just made a note in my calendar, Andrew, to the exact same point of, do we grab a school committee rep from each school committee? You know, is this someone that we've already assigned to some role that would match, you know, this work? And then figure out, okay, how do we proceed from here? What does this, what does this year look like? What does next year look like? What are the goals for this year in terms of, what things do we want to try to implement? What are the conversations we want to have with our town partners? What seems doable? What seems, you know, not doable? What are the reasons why we maybe can't do it and why we can do it? So, I think short-term, it's Thursday, Monday, Thursday, and then me sort of coordinating all the feedback that I'm hearing at these meetings, and then try to, try to proceed on some of the lower-hanging fruit, and then pull a committee together of our three towns to figure out some of the maybe thornier things.
Okay. Just to sort of go back to the regionalization study, which was two years ago, maybe?
Yeah, 21, 23, I think.
Certainly, one of the main talking points coming out of that, I think to all select boards, well, maybe not one select board, but two of the select boards, and certainly members of the committee, where that lets identify efficiencies that can be realized within our current structure.
Yes.
And certainly, this report has a number, even if we don't go to the consolidation route, has a number of things we could pursue to make ourselves more efficient and lean, and allow us to focus more on educational outcomes and less on redundancies and things like that.
I recall two specific members who wanted nothing to do with regionalization, who said, anything you need to make yourself more efficient.
I do too, so I think we should hold them to that standard.
Anything you need to make yourself more efficient, as long as we don't regionalize.
Yeah, so thank you very much for this.
You're welcome. It was, I had fun. It was good. I- I, so anything I can do to be helpful, you know, both Steve and Scott know how to get in touch with me.
Yeah, we appreciate it, Mary Ellen. Very much. A lot of hard work.
Thanks so much.
Went into it, for sure. And we'll see you on Monday. Middleton, it's at Fuller Meadow.
Yep.
Probably around six, we sat at 5:30, but it'd be like, probably 6:00, 6:15 or so. Thank you very, very much.
Sure.
All right, nice to weigh for the day. Julie keeps kicking me out. Actually, I'm going to kick it over to, would you like to introduce the weigh for the day? Since you guys worked on it?
So, as those of you who heard me speak at the September meeting, I think the, having a device-free educational environment was really important to a lot of us, and so Emily and I met to pull together some model policies from other communities and kind of from the legislation that's moving its way through the State House. And for me, it felt a little awkward coming at this from kind of like a top-down, less collaborative moment than like gathering, you know, the teacher input and the principal input and things like that, and just having to kind of go for it because it was so late in the summer, and it was something that we wanted for this year. So I think we did our best and then kind of sent it off to Dr. Morrison and the principals who put in their own revisions. So just taking kind of from the public comment, I do think, and what the parents have said, like, I think that dismissal is, I don't think we know how dismissal is operationalized at the school level. So it was more envisioning that the students could have them on the buses because that was what we had talked about at the last meeting. So happy to hear how we operationalize that dismissal word better. And then the, we had written the offenses to be much tighter, but those were written by the principals because we felt like we wanted to go with whatever they could enforce because it was coming from this kind of like fast-paced writing of a policy. And, you know, the principals and the teachers are going to be the ones on the ground, so we felt like they would best know how to come at it from, from their school perspective. So that's where that came from.
And then one other point, thank you for those survey results. That's really helpful for us, especially speaking with the community. I feel like initially, we had something in there that was like it would be the classroom teacher's discretion as to how the devices were stored, because I do understand that some of them, like, you know, some teachers prefer them in a, you know, whatever. I don't see that in here anymore.
The principals pulled that.
The principal, okay. So that, I guess, that's what happened there.
Yeah, and the goal ultimately is so that students are focused on what they're supposed to be focused on in school, and not being distracted by these devices. And I do, I do hear that often it is folks contacting the students from outside the school that is the bigger distraction than anything else. And I do understand parental concern around student safety, but I also would suggest that in the event of some, of a crisis of some sort happening, students' full attention should be on the teacher and the administrators in the building to guide them to safety and not be on a device communicating with a parent.
Yeah, we don't want the device tripping when we're trying to.
That is true as well, yes. Yes. All right, so we have the proposed language before us. If we wish this to be, this would not be an official policy because it has not gone through a policy subcommittee yet, so this would be put in our, this would be a vote to put this in our handbook for this year. Am I correct on that? And then this would then go to our T T U policy subcommittee for review.
As a pilot.
Yeah, if the other towns want to adopt it. It would go to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, just to make sure we're not violating any laws. I don't think we are. And then we could adopt it as an official policy, and then we'd go into our policy handbook. And we do have the option, if Boxford and Middleton do not wish to accept this language and/or have changes they wish to make, even though we are striving to keep our policy handbooks as uniform as possible, we can have policies that.
Yeah, we have a few one-offs.
That can fall outside of what Boxford and Topseal do. So were there any edits you wanted to make to this at this point, or we're feeling good?
I don't know if there is a better way to operationalize dismissal, or if, like, we can just in practice kind of say it's like when they're out of the building, or if we can leave that up to you to define.
Yeah, I think it's certainly worth looking at. You know, just thinking quickly off the top ahead, I mean, we do have, we have two waves of buses, so some kids do wait a little longer. So they can, I mean, certainly, we can look into it and kind of get some feedback from teachers that are seeing, like, oh, the kids are still waiting. So I think it's worth kind of reaching out to them to see how it's going.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, do we put some language in here that school committee reserves the right to adjust the policy? You know what I mean? Like, that would just give you a little bit of leeway, like, so two months from now, oh, we got some feedback, and I think, yes.
Yeah, like, if backpacks aren't working and we want to let the teachers put them in some sort of a holder, yeah, I agree, we should reserve the right to.
Yeah. Because it won't be, you know, exactly right out of the gate, and there'll be different feedback, and, you know, we got some, you heard from, you know, the association, that was good feedback, but we have to start somewhere.
Right.
And so you start somewhere, and then.
And with any pilot program, you're going to have adjustments.
Yeah. And if we hear from people like, you know what, it would be way easier if we put them in the shoe box or the shoe container or whatever the case may be, or something around dismissal. So, you know, if we call this, like, the, just some little asterisk on it, school committee reserves the right to revisit, or make updates, not revisit because that makes it sound like you're going to change your mind, you know, to make updates to this policy. Yeah, I mean, the only, so I'm just getting hung up on the dismissal thing. Like, we could, with saying, once students have exited the building.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
Because then we're not hung up on, like, 307's dismissal, but there's still students in the building until 3:30.
I think, yeah, I think when they, I was going to, I'm thinking the same thing.
Do they also wait outside during the winter? I have no idea how it works here.
Me either. I've always been the warmest mother.
Like, buses or?
Are you talking morning or afternoon?
Afternoon, yeah.
They wait inside until Milwaukee is announced that a bus has come and that bus is released.
Okay.
That's the same as storage, they wait inside the gymnasium until the bus is called and they walk outside.
Thank you, once they exit the school.
Yeah, and I think we can, again, make exceptions, make adjustments if a bus is late and a kid needs to contact their parent if they're in the lobby, like, I think.
Yeah.
Reason can be used.
You need a motion, or?
Yeah. Yes, we do.
With suggested edits.
With suggested edits. And then we would need you guys to just give us a edited version.
Okay.
With the asterisk on there about school committee reserves the right to update this policy, blah, 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 and then we can get into the handbook.
Okay. So a motion to accept the away-for-the-day personal connected device policy with the edits of.
Just suggested edits will work.
Oh, with suggested edits.
Yeah.
Second?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Beautiful. Just out of curiosity, did you hear any feedback from any neighbors or?
I got a little.
Yeah.
Yes. More like.
In the camp of buyer.
My kid's going to lose his watch because he loses everything, and I can, you know, keep it turned off during the day. I promise I won't, you know, reach out to him, you know, he's going to lose it between the backpack and his wrist, and that kind of stuff. Nothing along the lines of safety, more just.
Maintenance of a product.
Of the device.
Yeah.
So, and I feel like the bus situation isn't helping.
Sure. Right. Isn't helping parental concern right now.
Any of that kind of area of concern, but, yeah, nothing big.
Right, and for, to that end of it, that's when they get to school, right? For the bus? Like, it doesn't say when they get on the bus in the policy, correct?
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can wait until.
Yeah. Right, I think the concern is, like, they lose it during the school day somehow.
Right.
And then maybe, but if it goes in the back, well, it should be in the back.
Right. Yeah, I just, I heard a couple of parents be like, of kind of fifth, fifth, sixth, they were like, oh, they have to put their watches away this year. I was like, I'm happy about it, but we also all read The Anxious Generation together, so.
Yeah, they get it.
They get it.
Sure. Sure. All right, good. All right, so we'll await any updated language changes, and then we'll get it off to Adrian and Carol, and then we'll get into the handbook, so we'll get the handbooks out and go from there.
Okay.
And then you guys obviously talk with staff as well, if you haven't already. That'd be great. Now that it's approved. All right, we talked about the T T U meeting on the 6th. Our next meeting date is October 2nd.
Yep.
Anything for other?
I do not.
I have some things, but all the same for the next meeting. Bills and payroll.
In drive as listed, please, and thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the bills and payroll as listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And minutes for previous meetings, so we've got two? First one? Oh, I was looking here. So, yes, our meetings from, our minutes from our August 7th meeting are in the drive.
Look at the correspondence folder go.
I think we got rid of it.
Did we?
I mean, I was the clerk for like three years, and there was never one letter.
Exactly.
The one job I had. Look at me now.
Right.
Ensconced. All right. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from August 7th. All those in favor?
Okay.
All right, so now we need to roll call into executive session. So I will make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. We will return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment. So this is a roll call vote, so Andrew prays our aye.
Emily King, aye.
Melissa Augustin, aye.
Brendan Gahagan, aye.
All right, thank you. We didn't get a second, I'm sorry. We just forgot there.
Second.
Brendan.
I seconded it.
Brendan, second.
It was quiet.